Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Limbrook Board of Education for October 12th, 2022. If we could all please rise, Mr. Paleski will lead us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All board members are present. If no one has any comments or changes, may I have a motion to accept the minutes of September 4th, 2022, regular meeting. Al Westeiner was not there. Mr. Murray, second. Mrs. Dino, all in favor? Thank you. Mr. Cunz, the art gallery, please.
It by the Limbrook High School National Art Honor Society. The paintings on display were inspired by the work of contemporary artists Colin Schaub and Cherie Studios. A pendulum is a fixed object hung from a point so it can swing freely back and forth due to the force of gravity. When the object hits its highest point or the furthest from the ground, it has maximum potential energy. When the object oscillates or swings back and forth, it repeatedly converts its energy in motion due to the gravity on the swing. By adding paint to the pendulum in this project, the NAHS students were able to demonstrate the science behind the laws of motion and inertia while making dramatic abstract works of art. Please take a moment to enjoy this month's show, Pendemonium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunz. Dr. Burek, some presentations.
Thank you. It is that time of year where I am very pleased to announce we have three students going to Allstate this year, in December, a first weekend in December, going up to Rochester, nice sunny, warm Rochester, in December. Allstate selections. We have Dylan Baltas, 12th grader for the string bass, Zachary Buxton, 11th grader for bass one. And Sabrina Ostroff, 11th grade alto one. You know, many districts have one or two students, but Limbrook repeatedly has multiple students go to Allstate, and we're very proud of the students and the whole program. So, kids, come on up. Get your shirts so you can wear it proudly.
We have two retirements this evening. And the Baldwin, please stand up. Mr. Mooner?
Whereas Ms. And the Baldwin is a guidance council secretary, has announced her intention to retire effective January 6th, 2023. Ms. Baldwin has been an integral part of South Middle School since September of 2009. And whereas Ms. Baldwin's work ethic, attention to detail, and knowledge of our school community will be impossible to replace, we can always count on Ms. Baldwin to know every student by face and name. And whereas Ms. Baldwin is an invaluable member of South's staff, her generosity and kindness go beyond that of helping out. She never ceases to think of others in any circumstance. And whereas Mrs. Baldwin can always be found organizing her decorations and sprucing up the main office as each new season and holiday gets underway, Ms. Baldwin's spirit and love for themes will be sorely missed at South. And whereas if you are looking for a snack, just make your way to Ms. Baldwin's desk for some yummy sugary filled treats. And whereas Ms. Baldwin's plan to spend her retirement alongside her husband, Rob, as they enjoy the perks of being grandparents and having their newfound freedom that will allow them to travel and visit family and friends together, the South family will miss Ms. Baldwin terribly. We thank her for many years of service she has given to Limbrook, especially the South community. We wish her a happy and healthy retirement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the resignation of And the Baldwin for the purposes of retirement effective January 6th, 2023. Congratulations.
Okay, do you consent to agenda? I usually do that with my kids. I do his consent agenda. You want to do them both together or no? Oh, no, you're right, you're right, that's the only one you have. We have one more retirement this evening who is not present, but Ms. Argona will read the resolution.
Whereas Mrs. Vincenza Contaveros, typist clerk in the Limbrook Union Free School District, has announced her intention to retire effective January 20th, 2023, after serving eighteen and a half years in the high school guidance department and the fine and performing arts department, respectively. And whereas Mrs. Contaveros has always displayed a kind and welcoming atmosphere to all those she interacted with, especially parents, staff, and colleagues. And whereas Mrs. Contaveros has been eager to support staff in any way possible and always willing to find solutions in the most challenging situations. And whereas Mrs. Contaveros has been diligent in tracking the numerous instrumental repairs necessary, creating concert programs for Limbrook High School concerts, as well as many hours spent organizing and putting finishing touches on the music awards dinner. And whereas Mrs. Contaveros's warmth and camaraderie will be missed by her colleagues in the administration building, along with her mother's famous streets throughout the holiday seasons. And whereas the Board of Education thanks Mrs. Contaveros for her commitment to the Limbrook schools and wishes her a happy and healthy retirement to spend quality time with her family. Enzo looks forward to spending time with her mother, her husband Mike, and daughter Maria. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Mrs. Vincenza Contaveros for purposes of retirement effective January 20th, 2023.
I'll turn you back to Dr. Burek.
Okay, the month of October contains a week that is called School Board Recognition Week. The people who sit in front of you each month and who you speak to on the sidelines and at different events are all volunteers. So they give a lot of their time every single day, all in support of your children and the programs that we offer for your children. So each year at the October board meeting, we like to take turns and have different levels of our district show their appreciation to the board for all of their support and everything that they do. So I think Mr. Sarosi is getting in place there this year. It is the high school. So, Mr. Sarosi, would you please come up?
Good evening, everyone, and Happy Board Appreciation Month. On behalf of the faculty, staff, and students at Limbrook High School, I'd like to take a moment to thank the board for your commitment to educating the whole learner, and we'd like to celebrate Board Appreciation Month with you by showing you our gratitude for the support you provide that we all benefit from. As our district theme suggests, we're all creating the world we want to see, and to do so, LHS is first focusing on where we're from. As you leave this evening, please take a moment to see the new poster that's being displayed in the cafeteria, right up there. Over 350 students and staff replied to a survey asking them where they're from. The image created from the responses proudly shows off the diversity of our building and, as it says, what we're made of. This leads to our first presentation of the night. In September, the English department assigned each senior class to write a poem entitled "Where I'm From," which gave the students an opportunity to explore their roots and reflect on what it means to be from Limbrook. Each member of the board will receive a copy of the full collection of poems bound together on green and gold paper with a short foreword from Mrs. Gallyhoo. Members of the SGA Slate Board have volunteered to be here this evening to share their poems. So at this point, I'll turn things over to Gabby Geller.
George Ella Lyons, inspired by a poem written by a friend and fellow poet Joe Carson, first wrote "Where I'm From" in 1983. Barring Carson's line "Where I'm From," Lyons gathered images from her writer's notebook to compose her own poem. Finding the experience of connecting to her roots so enriching, Lyons began using her poem as a writing exercise with her students. Since then, Lyons' poem has been shared with and by many authors, teachers, and students as it speaks to our need to discover and celebrate who we are and where we come from. Our seniors have recently joined this tradition and written their own "Where I'm From" poems, and no matter where their story started or have taken them, all our graduating seniors can proudly call Limbrook home. Limbrook High School would like to thank the members of the Limbrook Board of Education for their commitment and dedication to the students in Limbrook. LHS has always been a family, and it is that sense of belonging that has provided the entire LHS community with the opportunity to strive to be the best. It is no wonder that LHS has been named a blue ribbon school by the United States Department of Education. It's been known that it takes a village for our children to reach their highest potential. We are here tonight to thank each of you for being a positive and supportive part of our village. Thank you.
This is my poem that I wrote for the Board Appreciation. I am from a Sony camera, from lenses and batteries. I am from warm sunny days where you struggle to keep your camera from overheating. I am from first day of school pictures and loud dinner conversations. I'm from Allison and Joe. I'm from long car rides home filled with discipline and lessons of life. I am from excuses are lies we tell ourselves and practice makes possible. I am from a nonreligious family, church was never my home. I am from New York City. I'm German and Irish. I'm from homemade cookies and mint chocolate chip ice cream, from the brother football games in the backyard where one of us left crying.
I'm from textbooks, from classrooms and desks. I'm from sunshine rising through the classroom window, shining bright, bringing natural light to the dimly lit room. I'm from the summers off and working within the rest, from Stephanie and Joe, educators just like many of you. I'm from the Sunday sauce during the day and watching sports at night, from the golden rule and perseverance. I'm from Olive Drive, separated by the dead end. I'm from Long Island, New York, pasta and bagels. From the strength and toughness of my parents, I have learned the principles of life. Thank you.
I am from coffee, from espresso and cold brew. I am lavender, purple, clean, refreshing smell. I am from morning pancakes and hard workers, from Nettie and Nick. I'm from the one that done right, do it yourself, and speak up for what you want, from do your best and never give up. I'm from 38 Mildew Place, Limbrook, with best friends as neighbors, from Italy and America, chicken cutlets, matzo ball soup, from giving time and effort for the benefit of others. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gabby, Lexi, Max, and Jake. Next, as you're aware, and Gabby just mentioned, Limbrook High School has recently been named a national blue ribbon school by the United States Department of Education. While this is an incredible recognition for the high school, it's a reflection on the whole community. Thank you to the board for your continued support to make a recognition like this possible. To put it in perspective, there are roughly 131,000 K-12 schools in the United States, and this year, 297 of them received this distinction. If you do the math, and Dr. Blackis, you can check me on this, it is less than one-quarter of a 1% chance that your school is going to be recognized. Even the most highly selective colleges in the United States have a 5% acceptance rate, which would mean you are 20 times more likely to be accepted to Harvard or Princeton than to receive a national blue ribbon. As a token of our appreciation, please accept this blue ribbon button, as well as this blue ribbon banner that I hope you proudly display. All right, and finally, Mrs. Reaganato and her Science of Foods class and the Career Development Food and Nutrition Class would like to show their appreciation through prepared treats, which includes a flourless chocolate cake, chocolate chip cookies and brownie bites, and a brown batter crinkle cookie, as well as apple pie bars. Each member of the board will receive an assortment to bring home. Included is a write-up from Mrs. Reaganato describing what went into each recipe. Want to say this is better than the button. I hope you enjoyed all of tonight's presentations, and again, thank you for all your support in providing the necessary resources to make LHS the wonderful environment that it is. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sarosi, a couple of things. One, before we go, can each student come back up and just identify themselves?
Sure.
Ms. Geller, and so forth.
My name is Gabby Geller, and I am the president of the SGA Slate.
Thank you.
My name is Max Corzon, I'm the treasurer of the slate.
I'm Jake Lunardi, and I'm the secretary.
I'm Alex Nieder, I'm the vice president.
Thank you. And maybe we'll have the students come up, take a picture with the board. Moving on to report from trustees. The Audit Committee meeting was held on October 3rd. Mr. Paleski, do you have anything to report?
Okay, so the Board of Education Audit Committee met October 3rd. Results of the annual financial audit and the annual internal audit were presented. The financial audit was performed by Noraki Smith. The audit of the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2022, in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, and government auditing standards, also known as GASB. There was a single audit of the district's major federal programs for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. The audit of the district's extra classroom activity funds in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, prepared by a cash basis of accounting. There was also a successful closing of the 2022 fiscal year. Auditors recognized excellent audit cooperation throughout fieldwork. The district implemented new accounting standards for leases called GASB 87. More importantly, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control identified. There were no current year or prior year findings or recommendations. So that was the financial. There was also an internal audit performed by Doc Angelo and Company. The annual risk assessment focused on information technology and the implementation of New York State Education Law 2D regarding privacy, data, and security. This law requires a gap analysis and remediation of over 200 standards required by the National Institute of Standards and Technology. District Administration recommended engaging a vendor to perform an outside evaluation of these standards, as well as present a remediation plan. The district administration also recommended adding remediation of specific high-risk threats as part of the vendor's scope of work. The audit firm agreed with the administration's recommendation as stated in the district's corrective action plan. The Audit Committee discussed the pros and cons of this recommendation and advises that this action to the Board of Education, advises this action to the Board of Education for implementation. There was also an overall audit of payroll operations, and there were no findings or recommendations. And the focus of the 2023 audit will be cash receipts, as well as a follow-up of the data privacy risk assessment. So overall, I felt that, you know, as always, things went incredibly smoothly. There were very few, there were no findings, and there were very few audit adjustments in the financials, which is incredible for the amount of size, for the size of our budget. Again, just another amazing job by Dr. Lynch and your staff, so congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Paleski, and as I listen to you, I realize why I am not on the Audit Committee. So, PTA liaison report, Mrs. Argona.
PTA Council just wanted me to remind everyone again that the scholarship game is this Saturday, October 15th. The parade starts at 1:00 PM at the high school, and then it ends at Marriott Street, and the game starts at 2:00. Tickets are $5 at the gate. They'll also have plenty of food, snacks, drinks that you could purchase. It's really a great day, so I encourage everybody to come, and the money that the PTA Council raises all goes towards scholarships for seniors. So if you're around Saturday, come to the homecoming game.
Thank you, Mrs. Argona. Mrs. Marcus, DEI Liaison Report.
The DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council met this week on October 11th. After the initial welcome, the four priority areas of the district DEI plan were reviewed, namely, one, developing inclusive curriculum instruction and assessment K through 12; two, strengthening and creating opportunities, access, and educational quality for all students in our diverse community; three, prioritizing student input to develop practices with a more equitable framework; and four, promoting intentional hiring practices that encourage candidates from diverse backgrounds to apply for open positions. Priority area four was related to personnel, and these goals were slated for year one and have been accomplished. The specific goals in priority areas one through three for this school year were also shared. In priority area number one, by the end of the 2022-2023 school year, generate lists of student literature explicitly taught and available as choices at each grade level, and note the inclusivity of authors from diverse backgrounds and perspectives. By the end of the school year, generate lists of monthly lessons taught in each building by grade level that include aspects of empathy, tolerance, diverse perspectives, and civic responsibility. In priority area number two, during the 2022-2023 school year, work on proactively identifying learning deficits early in students' educational careers to alter their academic trajectories by revisiting kindergarten screeners. During the 2022-2023 and 2023-2024 school years, monitor identified academic and perceived opportunity gaps for student success, and begin to implement student-specific supports, such as mentoring, additional support classes, and tutoring. During the 2022-23 and 2023-24 school years, explore further use of standard-based grading in grades K through eight. Lastly, in priority area three, during the 2022-2023 school year and beyond, organize an annual high school student-led community forum that brings our diverse community together to discuss issues and topics related to equity. During the school year, all building-level diversity committees will review and discuss, with the input from students, the diverse perspectives in the literature studied and the national curricular cultural months and holidays celebrated, and report their findings to the district-wide diversity council. That's a lot to accomplish. We have a few meetings throughout the year. The next one will be on December 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Under old business, there's nothing to report. Under new business, some Board of Education goals. First goal is to hire a qualified superintendent to commence the position by July 1st of next year. We want to institute and evaluate an alternative high school program, Owl Success Academy, in Limbrook High School, for students struggling with traditional learning model, and also to implement and evaluate a high school guidance plan designed to improve a student's sense of belonging. Is Mrs. Mitchell here? Oh, she's hiding from me, I see. Mrs. Mitchell now will speak to us about the results of the school climate survey.
Thank you, and congratulations on Board Recognition Month, and also for being part of the blue ribbon recognition that we all received at the high school. So, we administered, nope, sorry. In May of last year, we administered a district-wide climate survey, and there were two different surveys that were given. One was compiled by BOSIs, and they had standard questions that were available for students, staff, parents, and students, staff, and parents. So there was a breakdown that we received, a total responses of 2,181 responses between the two surveys, between the one that was generated by us, which was the one through five students and parents, and then the rest of the responses came from the climate survey from BOSIs. So there were 1,663 student responses, 351 parent responses, 167 staff responses, for a total of 2,181.
Mrs. Mitchell, on that one point, could you distinguish again from BOSIs and from you?
Right, I'm going to go through that as part of the presentation, that there were, the parents had, I'm sorry, the staff had the opportunity on K through 12 to be able to complete this survey. Students from six through 12, and also parents from six through 12, had the opportunity to complete the BOSI survey. Then another survey was generated for students and parents in grades one through five.
Okay. And we'll see the breakdown of the numbers, which ones came from?
Yep. Yep. Okay, in the climate survey questions, again, you know, grades six through 12 for students and parents, K through 12 for staff. This is the data that you're going to be seeing right now. And they broke down the questions into two, into three different categories. One was school safety and belonging, school environment, and school engagement. Under the school safety and belonging, it addressed categories such as bullying, emotional safety, physical safety, and substance abuse. The numbers are a little bit hard to see, but what can be seen is that across, across teacher non-instructional and student categories, we fared in favorable and most favorable categories all across the board. So some of the questions that would have been asked in this category, under bullying, it would have been, students are bullied at my school. Cyberbullying is a problem. Under the emotional category, it would be, I feel like I belong, I feel like my child belongs in this school, I'm happy to be at this school, people care about me. Physical safety would talk about the physical environment that students and staff would belong to, and whether they felt physically safe in our schools. Substance abuse talked about whether they felt that substance use and abuse was an issue within our schools, and whether we have adequate resources to be able to address those concerns. So again, even though we're seeing that, we are falling within the favorable and most favorable category, none of these categories had 100% that everything was 100% positive. So for me, looking at this data, it's where those grayer areas, where those responses, even if we would have had a higher response, you still would have a percentage of students and staff that would have responded, that they felt less favorable in that category. And that's where we get to drill down into the numbers. I'm sorry, I may lose my voice as I'm speaking. The next category was school environment, and they addressed areas such as discipline, the instructional environment, mental health, physical environment, and physical health. And again, we see a very favorable depiction that across the board, most of, the categories fell within the favorable and highly favorable categories. Under discipline, the questions would relate to, do I believe that discipline is fair? School rules are applied equally to all students? In the instructional environment, teachers encourage me to do my best. Programs and resources are adequate to support student learning. Student, school sees me as a partner in my child's education. Under mental health, the questions would relate to, the school places a priority on addressing mental health needs for students. I can talk to my teachers about problems with classwork. I can talk to my teachers about something that is bothering me. There is an emphasis on teaching social-emotional strategies. My teachers care about me. Students stop and think before doing anything they are, before doing anything, before they get angry. School provides quality counseling services. The school has enough programs to develop, excuse me, has enough programs to develop social-emotional skills or getting along with others. The school provides enough training and resources for me to support my students' SEL needs. So again, even within those higher band, there's more data that is driven down, and that's where the focus of our social-emotion program has been for years, and I'll get to that after we go through the slides. The next category was engagement, and again, we're still looking at the BOSI's data that was given to us. So under engagement, it was cultural competence, participation, and relationships. The composite data that came back, overall, fell within the favorable and most favorable categories. So the questions that were relating to cultural competence were, the school emphasizes showing respect for all students' cultural beliefs and practices. The school encourages to take challenges, challenging classes regardless of race, culture, and/or ethnicity. In participation, I have opportunities to participate in discussions and decisions. And participation, I'm able to participate in extracurricular activities, sporting events, and the life of the school. Under the relationships category, the questions would relate to, it's easy to talk to my teachers at school. Staff do a good job helping parents to support their children in learning at home. I'm comfortable talking to the school about my child. Then we drive down into the lower grades, where parents and students had the opportunity to be able to complete data, completed a survey relating to their younger child. The areas of focus were school safety and belonging, social awareness, and emotional regulation. The categories and the questions are a little, are similar to what was included in the BOSI survey. So under school safety and belonging, we had, and this was the student responses, I feel safe at this school, I feel like I belong in my classroom and in this school. In my school, we talk about how actions make others feel. I have been called names, teased, or made fun of more than once this year. My teachers help me to, help me to try out my ideas in class. My school tries to get my family to be part of the school. So again, that's safety and belonging. Similar responses from the teachers, my child feels safe, my child feels that he or she belongs. In my child's school, he or she talks about how his actions will affect others. My child has been insulted, harassed, or verbally abused more than once this past year. My child's teachers encourage him or her to try out his or her ideas. And my child, my child's school tries to get all families to be part of their school efforts. The student and parent responses was really interesting, that they were so, they were very much in line. There are a couple of outliers, I think that that one line is actually backwards, that my child has, feels harassed or verbally abused more than once this past year. So we're talking about the younger students, and how students respond to each other, and how they relate. But this data in itself is not the entire story. There's another, there's another slide that also talks about that if something happens, and if I hear something, if something goes on, that I have the ability and I have the strategies to be able to talk about it, to be able to work it out, and there is a support within my school. Under social awareness, the question's related to, in my school, we respect differences for other students. I have friends at this school. In my school, we talk about ways to be a good person. And in my school, if there is clear rules about not hurting other people by hitting, pushing, or using harmful words. And for the most part, we're looking at a very positive, favorable rating, just similar to what we were seeing in the BOSI survey. But what I pay attention to are the outliers, the grayer areas, and those, certainly those orange areas that would stand out in a different way. Same questions for the parents, and the response is very similar. Overall, the feeling is positive, and that there are right things that are going on, but we are, there are some areas that need to be looked at and be, and addressed, as we have been, but to a greater degree as well. Emotional regulation, I'm able to pull myself out of a bad mood. And again, we're looking at a larger grayer area, and then the more positive yes, in the smaller scale. Same question for the parents, emotional regulation, my child is able to pull himself, herself out of a bad mood. So then, this is the question that came to the students, in school, when I'm having difficulty, these are some of my strategies. I can talk to my teacher, I could talk to a social worker or a psychologist, I could take some deep breaths, I could talk to a friend, write, draw, or create art. I wait till I speak to my family or when I get home, and I don't do any of these. So the vast majority have strategies to be able to cope when there's something that is not going right during the school day, and there is a supportive network that is available for students in school. And this is the same questions that was asked to the parents, but it's, my child, in school, when my child is having difficulty, he or she usually talks to a teacher, talks to a social worker or psychologist, takes deep breaths, talks to a friend, writes, draws, or creates art, waits to speak to family at home, or we need additional strategies to be able to support my child. So, that's it in a nutshell, and I'm sure that there is questions that may come forward. What we are doing is, certainly I can speak to the amount of staff that we have hired to support our students, whether it be guidance counselors, social workers, and psychologists. I think that Limbrook is leading the charge in being able to recognize that this is where we get the information to our students, and be able to give them the supports that we need. Having dedicated support members in our elementary buildings and in all of our buildings is key and critical, and this is something that I thank all of you for making that kind of investment in our schools and in our children to be able to make that happen. Where we're going forward here is our district SEL committee, Social Emotional Committee, is exploring evidence-based programs, that we can take good things that are happening in a classroom and be able to pollinate that across our, across our schools, so we're having more of a shared vision, more of a shared vocabulary, more of a shared way of being able to deal with things as they become difficult. All in all, people were saying that they feel like they belong in Limbrook. They feel that they are safe in Limbrook, they feel that good things are going on in Limbrook, and that speaks to anybody that would be coming up and speaking here. But there's always more that we can do. There's always more conversations that we can have, and if we have an approach that this just doesn't exist in a classroom, but we have, we need to be able to train our staff to be able to work with our students in a different way, in a deeper way possibly than we have in the past. How do we engage the parents in this conversation? What I'm hearing consistently is that we're addressing the needs of the children, but we're also looking at a family dynamic. We're not just a little schoolhouse anymore, but we're taking on everything that comes with the kid, and that also is the family dynamic, and how it's, how it's affecting a student's ability to be able to achieve and thrive within our schools. So having the parents as part of the conversation, having the parents as part of the driving force, is also an emphasis of where we are. Then the staff also has their own needs too, that they feel that they could use more training and more development in social-emotional issues, and being able to bring us forward in that way. So some of the models that we're looking at, address that as that tripod, address it as the student, the staff, and also the parent, because you can't separate one from the other in order to be able to move forward in a cohesive way.
I just had a question. I know this year, like, we moved forward with the freshmen, for example, to get them to know their guidance counselors a little more, and I'm just thinking, you know, about this climate survey, and, you know, we have great staff here. Is there a formal way that they are introduced to the support staff in the high school, the social workers? Like, does that?
Yes. What we did, because we included that extra day of the orientation, so that was something that was brand-new. The guidance counselors have met or have nearly met all of their freshmen already, and the sophomores are going to be behind that. Next week, the support staff, the entire support staff are going into the PE classes, and it's a good time to be able to do a check-in, because we're about at that halfway part of the marking period, to be able to give a little bit more face-time to who we are, where we're located, and how we're able to be able to support you in this building. So there's that, there is classroom presentations that are going on, that this is not just a one-and-done, this is something that we just need to keep that drumbeat going throughout the entire year. And that's something that is happening at our middle schools, that's also happening at our elementary schools as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have, thank you for the presentation. I noticed, and it's nice to see that students, when they're having difficulty, talk to their teachers, and they talk to their friends, but this sort of piggybacks on what Mrs. Donino just said, the talking to a social worker or a psychologist was a very low number, and if there was a way, again, for the students to be more exposed to, you know, that resource, I would like, you know, it'd be nice to see them become more comfortable with the social worker or psychologist, someone to go to, in addition to their teachers or, you know, their friends or guidance counselors.
Right. And I agree with you wholeheartedly. And up until last year, in, at our elementary level, our social worker staff was completely split, like, you had, they were in multiple buildings. And because of the emphasis that has been placed on mental health and student support, now we have, we have that dedicated support where we never had that before. So this is something that they're in the building more, they're more present, they're in the classrooms, and they are getting to, they are making themselves known in different ways that we didn't even have the ability to prior to this year.
And also, I don't know how the questions, you know, were chosen, but it would be interesting to see, when we do this the next time, how many students feel, you know, have a choice as a coach or a club advisor, you know, because sometimes they spend a lot of time with, you know, those faculty members too, it'd be interesting to see.
Right, and that one survey, the one that came from BOSI's was a canned survey, so we really didn't have much way to be able to manipulate the questions. The ones that were for the elementary, they may have some coaches, they may have some people, that's more of a secondary thing, that they're going to be making those relationships. They have one teacher, and then they have the support staff that is in the building. So if that question was asked to a secondary and a middle school, it is something that would have included those kinds of questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
On the elementary level, are they doing some of the SEL lessons in the class to know, like, that they're a trusted adult or someone that they can?
They're going into the classroom every level, and they rotate, you know, because at the elementary level, you have five that you have to do, so it's, again, you have one dedicated person that is doing this in conjunction, in support with the classroom teachers, so they are rotating through the different grades to make sure that that presence is there and available. I know that they did a touch base, and they did a walk-in, hi, how are you, as the school year started, and I'm one of the support people here, and here's where my office was. But now they're going in, and they're doing deliberate lessons to be able to go along with our themes, go along with who we are as a district, talking about integrity, talking about emotional regulation. Emotional regulation on every level is, there's conversations that are being had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting those data together for us. In most places, there was like, a lot of alignment with teachers, parents, and students, which is good, we're feeling the same way.
Right.
Just a couple of places where I saw there was a little bit of a discrepancy, and still mostly positive scores, but I just had two questions that went with that. One of them was where students did not see substance abuse as big of a problem as teachers did, which doesn't surprise me, it's self-reporting, but I was just wondering what the high school does to help students recognize the dangers or the even existence of substance abuse? And then the other one was that students saw themselves as more participatory than the teachers did, and I was wondering if we had any explanation for that.
Again, this is a self-report, and yes, I did notice that the students thought it was less of an issue than parents and students, parents and teachers did, and that was something that jumped off the page for me as well, that we as the adults see it, and the students that are in it are like, I'm not seeing this as an issue, because it's kind of how we're existing as an adolescent in this time. So where do we address it? Again, in those classroom presentations that we do, it's, you know, talk in the health classes, in PE. Again, in those classroom presentations that we do, it's, you know, talk in the health classes, in PE, and also the deliberate lessons that we have throughout our support staff, going in and having those direct conversations. Certainly as any kind of issues or concerns are coming to our awareness, they are addressed specifically and individually with student and parent to make sure that they are aware of what's going on and perhaps some of the decisions that are not in their best interest. And those conversations are happening all the time with our principals as well as our support staff. The participation, that's an interesting one, that they, there seemed to be, that the students felt, say that again?
Data, it looked like the students felt more connected and participatory, which is a good thing, than the teachers saw. And I was just wondering if there had been any conversations around that yet.
No, there hasn't, but I think that that is a good conversation to have.
So one of the points you mentioned was the new ninth grade program where the kids entering high school have a little bit of additional contact with some of the resources so they know where to go. Is there any thought on implementing something similar at the middle school level? Because the kids who get to the high school this way, by that point, they're used to using those resources. Maybe get some of the middle school kids either in sixth grade upon entering school or at later grades, the same type of contact and touchpoints early on with their guidance counselors and social workers.
And that's a great point. And yes, that is also happening at our middle schools. In fact, I was at both middle schools and they are giving particular attention to those sixth grade students because they are the newcomers in their buildings, so just as the ninth graders are the newcomers in our buildings. And they are making presentations and making themselves available. They're taking advantage of the Spirit Week, of Say Hello Week, where it's just introducing yourself to other students because you have North and South. That would be, I'm sorry, you have, you would have Waverly and Marion that would be coming into South. And then you have the students from West End that would be going into North. So on both sides of town, those conversations are happening, very deliberate way, going into the classrooms, introducing them to who we are, helping them to understand emotional regulation as it relates to a sixth grade student and trying to get them to have a more sophisticated way of expressing themselves that is different than just happy, sad, glad, or mad. Let's, now you're in sixth grade, let's have a sixth grade conversation. Let's talk about being disappointed, let's talk about being concerned, and have that vocabulary start with them. So it is something that is happening. They are using, they're using zones of regulation down at the middle schools. And it's something that is, it's related to something that will be presented probably by the end of this year in a more global way, where you're able to identify what you're experiencing in this moment. And it's more than just identifying an emotion. But now that I understand what that emotion is, what am I going to do about it? So what are the strategies that I can use in order to be able to give myself a more balanced perspective? So those things are absolutely happening, so thank you.
Great. So Mrs. Mitchell, one, thank you very much for the survey. I think back to my time here where the idea of social emotional learning was just something generations ago we didn't consider. And I think there's a lot of things the younger generation, you know, I think definitely needs to work on. But I definitely find that in the last decade or so, that this group, as they're being raised, are more empathetic. I think they're a better group, I think there's less bullying that goes on. I think they have a better appreciation for putting themselves in their peers' position and to understand that. When you're going to go into these phys ed classes and you're going to speak to them, that's, are you talking about the survey or that's your opportunity, maybe in conjunction with that, to educate these kids, hey, if you feel isolated, if you feel alone, if you're going through something, that's when we teach them what their resources are.
Right, it's a physical presence. We give them an opportunity to be able to complete a check-in survey. Here you are halfway through the school year, want to know what's working for you, what's not working for you. Have you tried out for any clubs or activities or anything like that? And here we are as a support staff. We have guidance that's here, we have our other support staff for the most part are in the hub area, formerly known as the band room practice areas. So here we are. And what are some things that you would come to somebody that would be a support staff for? What are things that would come up in your life that you would think would be an opportunity to be able to share with another person? And we do a great job, our teachers are our eyes and ears. So if they see something, they say something. They let us know that a kid is just not in a right space and perhaps somebody needs to check in on them. Students self-refer down to the support staff, they also bring their friends. You know, I'm worried about my friend, I'm worried that there's something that's going on. As a friend, I can only take it so far, and somebody else in this building needs to be able to be that support. So I think that that's something that we do exceptionally well. I just think that we could always do better and we could always do more.
Well, I tell you, you know, I always find it interesting, the parallels between what we do in corporate America and academic institutions, because, you know, active shooters and workplace violence is a great concern in the corporate world. And one of the things we try to train managers about is identifying if someone's coming to work and something's different, if they're groomed differently, if they're behaving differently. And it's nice to know that you're including that for our teachers to notice those changes in kids. And as well as our coaches and our clubs, to have all those people be part of that process. Would you be including in those visits to phys, to PE classes to educating the students about the reported and the availability of that to them?
Reported is always a resource that we share in any of our presentations that we give here at the secondary level. Just making sure that they're aware of that as an opportunity. And then we let them know, we're your internal resources, but after three o'clock, we want to make sure that you're anchored with other people as well. So we have them often, get out your phone and put in the Long Island Crisis hotline. Just have it, just have it in your phone. This way, it's something that if you're out with your friends, you're out somewhere, there is another opportunity to be able to reach out. The 988 that has just, you know, come out, that this is a suicide hotline, this is something that we're also talking about then.
I mean, that reported is great because a lot of times they do want to reach out, but they just want to do it anonymously, so I think that's a great tool we have.
They've been appropriate, and parents have been appropriate with it. So it's something that gives us an awareness that something needs to be addressed and it's not something that has been over the bounds at all.
Right, perfect, thank you, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you so much.
Anything else on the board? Thank you, excellently done, Mrs. Mitchell, thank you. Moving on to superintendent's report, Dr. Birak.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Mitchell, again. Okay, you're going to hear that every month, folks, until this is over. Project Mission Liftoff update, update, okay? Reminder for all students who are in the process of developing an experiment that could have a possibility of going up into space, the deadline is October 19th. So if you are, if you know your children are getting involved in that, please remind them it is October 19th. I also mentioned last month that we want to make this interdisciplinary. And there was an art patch design contest, and you'll hear more about that later at another board meeting. But Social Studies Department, Social Studies Department held NASA Day on Tuesday, September 20th. Some of the lessons taught were that students completed a NASA scavenger hunt using their tablets. And then they created posters using Canva, which is a new presentation type of application, where they presented material based on the information that they found through their scavenger hunt. They were introduced to interdisciplinary initiative and connecting space exploration to the enduring issue innovation. Students were shown the video that Mr. Vesalico put together about the patch designs for the Project Liftoff through Schoology. And students were assigned reading from a database, Issues and Controversies in America. And the students focused on innovation, interconnectedness, and conflict. The study, they studied the history of rocketry and historical context of the development of NASA. And they did so in a Socratic seminar-style discussion. And they worked on a web quest on the NASA website and then using the website answered the question, have you ever wondered why space exploration should matter to you? Or how the work of NASA scientists and engineers affects your daily life? So good conversations were going on and we tried to bring in different content areas associated with this mission. Next, positive good news, middle school volleyball. We have not had a boys volleyball team in Limbrook Schools. And this winter, we are going to start one. So on the middle school level, we are going to have middle school boys volleyball. And once again, this is an example of where we have student interest in something. And there are a number of students who wanted to be on a volleyball team on the middle school level. So we have answered the need for the students and we are putting that in our budget for next year. And we're actually beginning it, the program, this winter. The next item, Assessment, Waiting, and Grading Commission. So what's this all about? Every single year, in recent years, towards the end of the year, which is unfortunate, the topic of regents and should the regents count? How much should the regents count? Do no harm, we've heard that over and over again. And we've put together little committees and they studied the regents in isolation of everything. This year, we're going to try something different. We're going to look at the overall assessment practices. And rather than, the regents is just one piece of assessing what students know. So the commission is going to be charged with really studying everything about the assessments. What is the purpose of assessing students? What do we want students to really learn? We're in the business of education, so it's not a grade, who can get the highest grade and all of that. What are we assessing when we assess students' knowledge? So we're going to have a group together, and Dr. Bilekis is going to chair this, of parents, administrators, teachers, and students. And a couple of students should be on that to see how it affects them and discuss, what are we assessing? What is the purpose of these exams? And then, because if the regents is not looked at in isolation then, how should we be assessing them? So we can't just take away the regents, what are we doing? So they're going to have, really, I'm assuming, there are going to be very interesting and lively conversations that take place, and they should take place. Because our goal is to have students learn and to prepare them for college. So it can't just be, well, how much is this worth? What are the students learning? That is what we want them to know. And then maybe there's a better way of how we should be assessing. And I want this group to come together and have a meeting of the minds to develop, what is the best way? How should we be doing this? Right now, we have four marking periods, we don't have midterms, should there be midterms? All of those things should be discussed. And they're going to survey other districts to see what they're doing for as far as best practices and have those discussions and then come back with a recommendation of how we should develop our assessment system. So I'm hoping that that will be a better solution, long-term solution, rather than an annual recurrence of what we have and to not treat the regents in isolation, but rather, what are we doing to assess the students' learning in general? Job Fair. Limbrook, for the first time, is hosting a job fair this Saturday. I'm going to ask Dr. Berman to speak to this.
Thank you. In response to the district's need to fill various instructional and non-instructional open positions and substitute positions, we will be hosting an in-person job fair on October 15th from 9:30 a.m. until 11:30 at the kindergarten center. Our hope is to generate interest for candidates to stop by and apply for open positions and participate in onsite interviews to help fill positions and create a substitute pool. Additional information is available on the district's website. Spread the word, thanks.
Thank you. And another follow-up is the elementary lunch program update. Dr. Lynch?
So I presented last spring that we were in the process of exploring the pilot program for the elementary lunch program. There was a prediction I had at the time that has since come true. So due to inflation and supply chain issues, when we went out to state contracts to take a look at what equipment would cost to launch a pilot program, the quotes came in at over $150,000. So that kind of, I don't want to say it's put the brakes on, but it's put the severe, you know, that's just more money than, I think I had explained it back in the spring. An equipment purchase takes voter authorization unless we can do it out of the proceeds of our school lunch fund. And we just don't simply have that in our school lunch fund. So we're going to continue to look at this problem, this issue that's developing and continue to work on it. We'll be reconvening the, now that we've talked to the board about this, we'll talk to this about the food committee, we'll get back on some planning. But it was a disappointment, to say the least. I knew it was going to be high, but when you see prices like that, it was just insane.
Thank you, and curriculum update, Dr. Bilekis?
As a follow-up to last month's BOE meeting, parents of students in kindergarten and first grade actually may be seeing new materials arriving in their homes shortly. The district has been building up our decodable text libraries in support of our Science of Reading Initiative. Decodable texts are specifically designed to be used in the beginning stages of reading instruction. They are carefully sequenced to progressively incorporate words that are consistent with the letter-sound relationships that have been taught to new readers. We are very excited about these texts and the important role that they will play in helping our students grow as readers. Please note that they are not a substitute for reading authentic texts, and we still encourage you to read with your children and to your children. Thank you.
Thank you, and capital projects update, Dr., back to Dr. Lynch.
So the two projects that we have on our radar are the Waverly Park Courts. So we're trying to put a date together to put that bid out because that has cleared State Ed. And then I saw wonderful swatches in Dr. Birak's office today for the ballot on the high school library. So that will be heading up to State Ed and hopefully we're getting approval on that. And then I'm happy to announce through a legislative grant, we have the ability to start a project that was applied for before COVID. So the funds have finally come through from Albany and the West End Playground Project will proceed. Pretty, actually, we're hoping to get it done in this particular school year. So hopefully it'll happen in April.
Thank you, and that's the report.
Thank you, Dr. Birak. At this time, we'll move to public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, please come to the podium, identify yourself and indicate whether you live in or out of district.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ingrid Franz and I live in East Rockaway. I'm here tonight to talk about the summer playground program. My children attend South Middle School and Marion Street School. They have attended summer playground for many years and they love it. But this past summer, my children cannot attend because my husband and I both work. So we had to send them to a full-day program. So I'm here to ask the board to consider extending the program from 9:00 to 12:00 to 9:00 to 3:00, which would benefit our children and our community since they will be able to spend their summer days with their friends in their own neighborhood instead of attending a program elsewhere. I've talked to other parents who are also in support of extending the summer program day, and I hope this can become a reality. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Franz.
Good evening, my name is Misha Cabral-Martin and I'm a senior at Limbrook High School. I'm also president of the Student Council of Excellence, a club that supports the Excellence in Education Foundation for Limbrook Schools. And this is my, and this is the club's vice president, Gabrielle Geller. As you all know, the Education Foundation was reestablished in 2018 to support all Limbrook students by providing innovative resources to the district that are not otherwise provided in the annual school district budget. While the effort started out strong with mostly contributing both time and your own money to support the foundation, COVID hit just as the foundation was about to create a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. As you all know, while this community strongly supports the shop local concept, many businesses were barely surviving and that effort had to be placed on the back burner. Likewise, when schools reopened in 2020, the foundation made the conscious decision to wait for the community to be ready before it began to start fundraising again. Acknowledging the financial impact of the pandemic, respecting that many families were now struggling with unemployment and health issues. We formed the President Council, the Student Council of Excellence because we believe in the foundation's mission and purpose. We want the best experience at our schools and we know that we can achieve more when we work together. Our school's volleyball game raises $1,000 alone and we have some great ideas for new and much bigger fundraisers this year. But there's a problem. The problem is that while the foundation volunteers waited for things to get back to normal, they lost a good number of volunteers, supporters, and momentum. There are about 190 student members in the Student Council of Excellence. We believe that we could get more people motivated again to help the foundation raise money. And we believe that the foundation can once again build the energy to do great things in this community. in this community. They were only getting started and did some great things. Just check out their website at limerickef.org to see what grants they funded.
My name is Gabrielle Geller and I'm the vice president of the Student Council of Excellence. The loss of volunteers is something we, as students, cannot help with. While a few of the original executive board members that started the foundation in 2018 are ready to move on, there are now not enough people to continue the work of the foundation without them. This means if that the Limerick Education Foundation can't find the right people to fill vacant positions, they have to dissolve the group. We don't want that to happen, we don't want that to happen, and we know that you don't want that to happen, but it will by the end of the year if new volunteers don't step up. We came here today because the people in this audience, as well as the many watching at home, care about this community and want to see their children's education enhanced by the innovative ideas that are funded by the foundation's efforts. We need volunteers to take executive board positions and get the momentum in the community going again. Without the foundation, there is really no purpose to our student club. Our club was named the Student Council of Excellence because Limerick students want to lead the way to a brighter future. The club gives us opportunities to hone our leadership, communication, and business skills by advocating for, more for ourselves, aligning with the mission of the foundation. We even get a seat at the grants committee table because we are the ones that will benefit from the grants. We are even permitted to apply for grants if we have great ideas that Mr. Sarosi agrees are able to be implemented in our school or district. The Education Foundation is at the forefront of recognizing diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice efforts in our schools. But what is possible becomes impossible if there is no foundation. Please, if anyone is listening and wants to be a part of a group that is really special and important to our community and can leave politics at the door, please email info@lymerickef.org and let them know that you are not ready to see the foundation dissolve. Thank you.
Can I ask you guys a follow-up, which may help your efforts? So you're looking for volunteers from the adult, the parent members of the community or non-parents. What type of roles are you looking for people to volunteer in? And generally speaking, what type of time commitment? I'm only asking so people in the audience can hear and decide if it's right for them.
I know that there's, there's like executive positions that are vacant now. I'm not sure about the time commitment.
So actually, I was going to comment. I was an executive board member of the Excellence in Education Foundation, but part of the bylaws was that when I was elected to the school board, I needed to resign that position, which was hard for me. Actually, my son this summer got to enjoy the, the fruits of some of the labors. The science research program has a PCR machine and he was creating DNA. And that was a grant that one of the teachers applied for from the Excellence in Education Foundation. So if anyone has specific questions, I'm happy to share what my experience was, which was, was wonderfully positive. I, I still am a member of, of the committee and contribute, but, you know, I'm unable to serve in that capacity because I'm here on the board. But I'm happy to convince anybody to, to help you out because, you know, and, and just in fact, in the year, years that I was with them, the greatest single contributors to our fundraising were the students. The National Art Honor Society donated the entire proceeds of One of the Night of the Pumpkins to the foundation, which was our biggest single fundraising event that year. So students are integral to the work. It's really rewarding. It doesn't take a tremendous amount of time. It really just takes some, some, some passion and desire to see better things in our classrooms. And I'm, I'm happy to speak to any potential volunteers. You can reach out to me through the school district or through Facebook.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Stalter. I'm a resident, and I'm just here to ask about an update about the information that I presented to the board last month regarding doing fundraising raffles on school grounds.
Yeah, but we want to, we know specifically. Right. You know, and you had mentioned that to me. What were the specific ideas that you had? Because it, cost matters, 50/50 matters, was it a particular item? What was the idea that you had envisioned or interested in?
Well, I shared the information last month. Unfortunately, you weren't here. And I gave the information to the lawyers. It was specifically about being able to, to provide, to do fundraising through raffles based on what the gaming commission says is allowed for a nonprofit organization. So if you're to do a raffle that will produce less than $5,000 or less per raffle, then you do not need a gaming license. So in the, in your policies and procedures, it says that a nonprofit can, can do raffles if they meet the criteria of the New York State Gaming Commission. So based on that information, I don't understand why.
To be specific, so your thought is at a football game or a volleyball game, you would want to be able to collect money from people there to raffle off an item that was donated?
Yeah.
Such as a TV or something?
Yep, absolutely.
I did, excuse me, I did take your information. I did provide the board with a memo about what they could and couldn't do. I did provide them some, with some alternative language because some of the policies would have to be revised. And at this point, it's something for the board to discuss and have perhaps a public conversation about and make a decision. There are a lot of limits on a school district. For example, students can neither sell nor buy raffles, which certainly limits the ability to do that within schools. But I did give the board a memo and now it's, it's essentially a decision that's going to have to be made. But I don't think it's a decision that they can make tomorrow. I think that there's going to have to be some significant discussion.
I'm just asking for an update because I haven't heard anything. So I wanted to know what the next step is. Does it go to the policy committee? Does it have to have a conversation here? That's why I'm here asking, what is the next step? Because I haven't heard anything about it from anyone.
Well, and I'm telling you, what, what now has to happen is for the policy committee to be told to look to change the policy, first the board's going to have to decide whether that's something that they want to consider. So the board's been given some information.
Okay, so can we put it on the agenda for next month?
I'm sorry?
Can this be put on the agenda for next month to have a conversation?
Not by me.
No, I'm asking the board.
So Jane, let me ask you some specific questions. So based upon some of those limits, right, what is, I believe, with, no one individual can put more than, I think it was $100.
Can win more than $100, that's correct.
So if, if, if local business donates to us a TV, the value of that TV becomes a relevant factor, correct?
Probably. And I only say that because I did not research it from a question of non-monetary awards.
Right.
But I would, I would assume that if you're limited to a $100 gift, that a $500 item would violate.
And what was the most amount of money, the cap? Was it $5,000 on the cap or was it $1,000?
Actually, I thought it was $1,000 was the cap.
No, the, it's $5,000 or less. The gaming commission does not require you to get a license. So the $100, I'm not sure what guidance that.
The $100 is, is part of the law? And the, I'm sorry?
I, I thought it was like Town of Hempstead or something also had its own, there was, it wasn't the gaming commission, it was something else had the thousand.
The $1,000 limit is, is, is a limit on the amount of prizes that can be given out. And the $100 is a limit on any one prize.
Okay. Can you share that information with me? Because I would really like to see where that information is coming from. Because in my, I did not find that in my research.
Well, council's not going to share with you the research he provides for the district. I'm trying to.
Wait, I'm sorry. Oh, he's not going to, but I would like.
Right. You know, the work that, the council that provides work to the district is not legal work that gets disseminated out. But the answer is not to be difficult, but to provide to you an answer to your question. I think the gaming commission was not the ruling body, is not the only ruling body that controls. So you're also within the Town of Hempstead and other places. I'm trying to get the, as well as the village. The Village of Limerick could have its own restriction, which would override those factors also. But I do believe it was 1,000. No, I know, remember that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just asking, let's put it on the agenda.
In short, Ms. Stalter, the other thing is the policy committee hasn't had a meeting yet, so we'd go through that first, so.
Well, he just said there had to be a conversation before it went to the policy committee.
Can I interject for a minute?
Yep.
I think before it goes to the policy committee about amending existing policies, the board would have to have a discussion and then determine to send it to the policy committee. I think we're kind of a little bit ahead of the, the curve here. I think first it has to be a decision about whether the board has an interest. And then, because we did propose some language that could amend several of your policies, but I don't think we're at that place yet. I think we're at the place at the moment where the board has to decide whether that's something they want to continue to explore. And to my knowledge, there hasn't been a public discussion about that.
And that's why I'm asking if we can add it to next month's agenda. That's why I'm here to ask, what is the next step? What's the update? So.
No, I can appreciate what you're saying. And the, we will look to getting a more definitive answer for you regarding those subjects. I'm not going to definitively say it's on next month, but you'll be back here hounding me if I don't. But as we've discussed, I do think it's a good idea. We do know that other school districts did it. I was at the football game that you may have been at at North Shore where they did a 50/50 raffle in the stands, which I think was a violation, but they did it anyway. We're not going to violate that. But the idea is to see if we can come up with something to enhance the support our groups have, if it's legal, if it's legal and we can do it and people want to support, there's no reason we shouldn't. So we'll definitely move towards getting an answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stalter. See no more questions. We have one sympathy resolution this evening for Joan Cordani. Whereas the members of the Board of Education of the Limerick Union Free School District have learned with sorrow of the passing of Joan Cordani, former employee of the Limerick School District, and whereas Joan Cordani served as a foreign language teacher at South Middle School for 38 years, from 1954 through 1992. And whereas the Board of Education is mindful of the contributions made to our district by Joan Cordani during her years of service to our community, be it resolved that the Board of Education records its sorrow, its sympathy, and the esteem in which Joan Cordani was held. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the family of Ms. Cordani with the hope that they will find solace and comfort in the rich heritage of good works for which she is remembered and revered. We also have a donation. The board gratefully acknowledges and accepts five football helmets from Hewlett-Woodmere Public Schools. Moving on to superintendent recommendations. We have one change tonight in those recommendations on 2210G27. It says north, that language should read high school. I'd like to ask for consent agenda on resolutions 2210C1 through 2210C14, 2210N1 through 2210NC20, and 2210G1 through 2210G47. May I have motion, please? Mrs. Marcus, second. Mr. Lunar, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Mrs. Dino, second. Mr. Murray, all in favor? That completes our meeting for this evening. Come on, get home safe.